They will be removed and may be subject to arrest. Now, our first order of business today, before we begin our action items, I would like to take a moment to welcome our newest trustee, student body president Adolfo Alvarez, and invite him to take the oath of office. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to read you the oath of office. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill?
I do.
Further, do you solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities, which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States? To the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God.
So help we God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now that student body president Alvarez is official, I'll ask Secretary White to please call the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Allison?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Mr. Blaine?
Mr. Bryan?
Dr. Jones?
Mr. Kalapa?
Mr. Codis?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Mr. Meekins?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Chair Pryor?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
And I am present. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Secretary White. As chair of this board, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board today, please identify it at this time. Hearing none, we'll now move to the approval of the consent agenda. Members of the board, there are a number of items on the consent agenda for approval. You have been provided with this list, and I'm going to give you just a couple of seconds to review it. There's nothing in here that hasn't been discussed yesterday at length. And please take a quick look. Having read the materials listed under the consent agenda, is there any item that needs to be moved to the discussion portion of either the open or the closed session agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve all of these items contained in the consent agenda. Thank you, trustee Patel, for the second. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it. It is approved. I'm now going to move to a few remarks. And I always try to be brief, and I may be a little bit longer than usual just to thank some people, as this is my last meeting as chair. I want to welcome all of you here to the number one public university in the world. I've opened every meeting over the past two years with this same message because I believe it so strongly. We are the nation's oldest public and its most vaunted. Our revered history and reputation for excellence, for academic rigor, for athletic success, and for service to the state and beyond stand alone. And we have something even more special, our people and our unique love for this place. I'd like to recognize just a few of those special people this morning. I want to start by commending the chancellor for his selection of Mia Hamm as our graduation speaker. She was awesome. I've heard many compliments that she was the best speaker we've had in recent memory. Her message was clear and concise and of great relevance for our graduates. Future speakers, take note. I also want to commend our groundskeeping crew. The campus looks spectacular. And as always, thanks to the university police for working to keep everyone safe. But most of all, thank you. It was great. I've spent a lot of time in South Building over the past several years from the basement, euphemistically known as the garden level, with the wonderful events team of Stacy, Julie, Heather, and Megan. And you too, Mark, up to the third floor to visit and get an occasional bit of candy from my friend Trevon, who has helped me so much over the past six years. Carolyn, thank you so much for keeping my motions in order. No small feat. And Paulette? That's our secret. In the chancellor's office, I'd like to acknowledge someone who is no longer with us but made an indelible mark on all who knew her, Elizabeth Williams. And I want to thank someone who doesn't get a lot of attention, and to his credit, that is how he likes it, Chris McClure. In many ways, he keeps the board and the university running, all with his unique Western North Carolina charm. I'd also like to give a warm welcome to our new university council, Paul Newton, former president of Duke Energy and the Senate Majority Leader. We're very lucky to have you here with us, Paul. Lee, I've been searching for an appropriate gift for you as I wind up my time as chair. But really, what do you give the guy who has the best job in North Carolina? So I thought it would be appropriate to get you the one thing that you don't have. And I've been all through South Building, and I've never seen one. So with that, I want to present you with this token of my appreciation, as well as as well as something that could come in handy. It's a suggestion box. And on the odd chance that I'm not around or Marty Codis isn't around, sort of a walking, talking suggestion box, someone could just put their little suggestion in there. But seriously, I want to compliment the chancellor on his willingness to entertain suggestions and to always do so with consideration and good humor. Many people in positions of leadership don't think they need outside help. They think they have it all figured out. So it's a great message to send to the university community and beyond that we are always open to suggestions for improvement. When I joined the board six years ago, too many were comfortable with our historic success and were reluctant to take on the hard things that are necessary to sustain excellence in a changing world. There are still some critics out there who resist change and always defend the status quo, even when, in reality, it's their status, their access, their influence that they are most concerned about. I want us to be great today, tomorrow, and into the future. To be great, we need to remain open to change and open to constructive criticism and to suggestions from people outside of higher education who might have other insights. Many of our alumni and Carolina parents have achieved the highest levels of success in their field, and they are devoted to serving the best interests of the university. We need to engage and listen to them even more. We should not just tolerate but encourage debate in every classroom, program, and school, throughout the athletics department, and certainly in every Board of Trustees meeting. I'm proud that we've had more of that in recent years. At times, I've been in the minority to vote against something, but I always did it from a place of principle. It has long been one of my beliefs. We should never default to the easy path and just go along with the group because the group might just be wrong. So I made a decision early on. I would rather be in the minority than just conform. But through building consensus, we've been able to accomplish a lot of things the past several years. I'm very proud of the work with Dave Bolick to get the budget approval authority for this board several years back. I'm just as proud of my role as the lone trustee and advocate on the search committee that led us to hire Nate Knufman as vice chancellor of finance and operations, and he's been phenomenal in that role. Several trustees served on the search committee for our new chancellor. During the search, Lee's background was unconventional and unique, and that was a good thing. His private sector experience and deep knowledge of the state budget and state government has now aligned us with the Board of Governors, the General Assembly, business leaders in the state, and alumni in a way that is long overdue. At a time of great change in higher education, we made a deliberate choice that was prescient at the time and should be a model of the future. Thanks especially to all the members of this board who supported the adoption of the Calvin Report for institutional neutrality and have been leading the nation and advocating for viewpoint diversity in a way that was prophetic of the looming change taking place within higher education nationally. This helped lay the foundation for the new School of Civic Life and Leadership, and we got the best dean in the country to lead it. We've launched the Institute of Risk Management Insurance Innovation, expanding on our well-established Center on Financial Risk and Environmental Systems. Now undergraduates can take classes in minor and disciplines of risk management that offer even greater job opportunities with support of some of the leading insurance entities in the world. And we've got a great person to run it, in Greg Charaklis. And also, we had an extensive conversation about athletics yesterday. And I want to also thank the chancellor for his leadership in helping hire Coach Belichick. And we now have one of the most exciting falls in front of us that we have had in a long time. In closing, I want to remind us all that complacency is the enemy of excellence. We have to commit to excellence every day. One of the strengths of this volunteer board, we aren't worried about protecting a paycheck or getting a promotion. We call it like we see it. I know some have questioned our approach, but I assure you at no point was there any agenda other than what was in the best interest of the university. At graduation, I reference that there is a time when the group may be wrong and you may be the person who's right. So I want to encourage everyone to resist the pressure to conform or default to the status quo, and instead, think only about what you believe is in the best interest of this great and robust university, and then have the courage to make it happen. That is what counts. Go Heels.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll now call on the student body president for his remarks.
Hello, everyone. It's great to see you all. Sorry, I'm going to try to give this short. It's merely introductory and just welcoming everyone. Thank you for welcoming to the board. I want to first recognize and thank a couple of people. I want to thank my family. My sister and her husband traveled from Atlanta to be here. The Clark family that is here. I moved to the U.S. when I was 16, and I landed for the first time at a summer camp in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And I got the chance to meet them. And I think that they showed me what the excellence of this state looks like. They showed me what being welcomed and loved and cared in North Carolina looks like. And that pushed me to come back to Carolina. I always say that I don't have the traditional story about Tar Heel born, Tar Heel bred. I didn't know what UNC was. I just knew that there was something special. One family had shown me about the state, and I do not regret taking that as an opportunity to discover more and now be able to serve the state back in this position. I want to thank interim provost Jim Dean for coming back to Carolina. It is incredible to welcome you back to the university. And I think that we're really excited for this interim period. Katie Musgrove, the outgoing chair of the employee forum. We thank her for her service. She is finishing her tenure. And I would like a round of applause for her, for her term as chair of the employee forum and for leading the employees into these years of service. So thank you, Katie. And so it is an honor to serve as student body president of the nation's oldest public university. I always say that it's an honor and also comes with great responsibility. 0.003% of the student body gets to sit here. That is one of 32,000 students. And so that also comes with the fact that we might find ourselves in opposite sides of issues and fundamental issues throughout the year. But what we hope we can all recognize is that we have a sacred duty, and we all share this sacred duty to help Carolina become the world's best public university. We're all here for that reason. And I'm looking forward to having conversations. And all I ask is that we might disagree, but that sometimes remember the fact that we're all in this together. And we're here to I actually would like to recall Chancellor Roberts' commencement speech in the winter commencement. He mentioned this rock that sits in his office and how the rock has changed over time with the walks of lives of peoples. That's how students are. They're like a rock. You go through life, and that rock changes. I see Carolina as another rock. I think that an imperfect system, we cannot make that rock look perfectly. But it is all of our jobs to make sure that we can shine it as much as possible. And it takes a village to do that. It takes a village to make sure Carolina is as rounded and perfect as we can do it. So I'm hoping that this year we can work together to continue advancing student interests, to continue advancing the interests of the university in what's arguably one of the most challenging times for higher education in decades. So we want to continue to be able to advocate for students, and we thank everyone for their service. Also, all administrators that continue to work with us through these challenging times. We are really, really appreciative. Kristy Heard, it's always one text away. I'm Kristy. I need help, and she's always willing to get back to me. So yeah, I'm really looking forward to this year. Some of the stuff that I'll be working on, the Carolina Closet. I have spoken with Vice Chancellor Michael Anderson about this. But one of the biggest class divides on campus is the lack of access to formal attire. It is a very big class divide that a lot of alumni struggled with when they were at the university. You know, you have a networking event, and you don't have access to a suit. And it's one of the things that can set students back from success the most. So we're hoping to turn this year into an opportunity for development to encourage parents and alumni to give to an opportunity to establish a permanent suit rental system on campus that supports students that really are in need of this professional asset that students must have access to. So I'll be headed to Atlanta for the summer. I'll be doing some alumni work through Udo in the area. So I'll be meeting with alumni in the area. We'll be hosting a dinner reception with some donors. And I'm looking forward to reporting back about the progress of this initiative throughout the year. So that by the time my term ends, we can live an opportunity for students to have access to formal attire. And I think there are a lot of infrastructure changes on campus. So I want to thank the Board of Trustees and all the administration for finally directing that we catch up on housing, that we catch up on infrastructure, and we are targeting this infrastructure divide compared to our peer institutions. Though this comes with some pain periods. So I want to be able to tell a better story about this. I want to be able to tell my peers about how we're going to come out on a better end in a couple of years once this progress in infrastructure comes out. But that also comes with the more prepared for housing. So another thing we'll be working on is the housing application reform. So we had some meetings with the director of Carolina Housing and the dean of students, and that'll continue throughout the summer to make sure that the application for housing is as prepared to be equitable and support, especially juniors and seniors that are going to struggle the most with this housing shortage, and make sure that we are understanding what struggle and difficulty can look like in a housing application. So throughout this summer, we're working on that. In July, I hope to report back on the progress. But we hope to work with them on some advisory committees to make sure that we understand who gets priority. How can we make the application more holistic so that maybe we change the timeline for it? Maybe we consider not letting an entire suite be let in at the same time with one single application? So how can we make sure that students are set up for existing housing? So, and that's all for me. I appreciate your service, Chair Pryor. We're thankful for everything, and I'm really looking forward to serving this industry. Thank you again for everyone who came out to support me. And it is an honor to be the first Latino student body president in the university's history. I think it's a great milestone. That I also want to recognize the work that other Latino students do on campus to continue advancing our community. I think that especially right now, I'm thankful that I can represent my community and represent it in such a high capacity and say that, you know, I might be the only person in the room, but there are a lot of people who are rooting for me. I know that. And I am rooting to be able to support many, many others. So I think that's all, and thank you so much for welcoming me.
Thank you so much for those remarks. I'll now recognize Samantha Shield from the Graduate and Professional Student Government Association for her remarks.
Morning, everyone. To the members of the board, thank you so much for having me here. I know I'm not President Frazier, but I am very happy to be here for her today as she had a medical appointment that she could not move. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you all. My name is Samantha, and I service the Director of Health and Wellness with the Graduate and Professional Student Government. I'm very honored, again, to deliver these remarks on behalf of our president. And she asked me to share a couple of key priorities that will shape GPSG's advocacy over the coming year. So first, I wanted to start with the AI policy and student representation. This is one of the chancellor's topics for this upcoming year, and graduate and professional students believe this is an important topic that we cover. As artificial intelligence becomes more integrated across research, academics, and administration, it is essential that graduate students are at the table. We are advocating for student representation in these discussions to ensure ethical, inclusive implementation. We currently have some really interesting data on how grad students and faculty feel about AI, and we'll be very happy to share it over the coming year. In terms of job security for graduate students, President Frazier wanted to make it known that students in grant-funded roles are now facing a lot of uncertainty, as many of us know, as there are funding issues for research students. This raises a broader question. What protections and commitments does UNC provide in such cases? Does the broad support research? Does the, excuse me, does the board support research at Carolina among funding uncertainty? We would like to explore more robust contingency planning for students, whether they be graduate, professional, or undergraduate students with these concerns. And then we move into graduate and professional student stipends. I want to start by saying we are extremely grateful for the recent increase to the minimum stipend as it is a meaningful step in the right direction. At the same time, data still shows that UNC continues to trail behind peer institutions. While we understand that this may not be the year for furthering increases due to current budget constraints, GPSG will remain committed to advocating at both the state and federal levels to expand the resources available to support Carolina's graduate and professional students. Investing in graduate education is investing in Carolina's research, teaching, and future. Mental health and wellness continues to be one of the most pressing concerns among our students. I can say that with a little bit of bias, being the Director of Health and Wellness. We are committed to supporting and expanding efforts like the Graduate Student Experience Initiative, advocating for embedded counseling models, and improving departmental support for students through mentoring programs. We view mental health not as a secondary concern but as foundational to student success. Lastly, we aim to foster belonging at Carolina. This year, we're reimagining what connection looks like for graduate and professional students. Beyond existing platforms, GPSG will prioritize creating new spaces where students can build relationships across programs, identities, and lived experiences. This can include through programs such as a multicultural fair, which is a new idea that we hope to implement throughout this year. In closing, GPSG is committed to laying a strong foundation, one that responds to every changing need of graduate and professional students and reinforces Carolina's legacy that we've mentioned previously as a leading institution, not only in the country but in the world. President Frazier looks forward to working very closely with each and every one of you to advance a more inclusive, sustainable, and student-driven future. Thank you again for your time and your continued service to this university.
Thank you, Samantha, for those remarks. And I'll now recognize Chancellor Roberts for his.
Chair Pryor, thank you. And first of all, congratulations to you, and thank you for your service. You have been unwavering. Some might say relentless. And in your belief in Carolina and in your commitment to making us even better. So thank you. I look forward to continuing to work with you and your service on the board. Congratulations to trustee Alvarez. We've already built, I think, a constructive working relationship and look forward to working with you over the coming year. And congratulations to Lee Frazier, the new head of the Graduate and Professional Student Government. I'm sorry she couldn't be here today, but we look forward to working with her as well. Welcome to Jim Dean, who is back as interim provost. We appreciate his willingness to step in. I consider myself and the university exceptionally fortunate that we have someone of Jim's experience and caliber available and willing to serve, having served as dean of the Business School, provost here at Carolina, and president of the University of New Hampshire, recently, quote unquote, retired and moved back here to Chapel Hill. And we're grateful for his service. And we also want to thank Chris Clemmons for his dedicated service as provost over the last three years, during which time he hired most of our currently serving deans in addition to helping launch the School of Civic Life and Leadership. Two of our deans, two of our longest-serving deans are stepping down. Martin Brinkley announced that he's stepping down as dean of the Law School. He's our longest-serving dean over a decade of service. He'll serve until his replacement is named. And Angela Kishuba, our second-longest-serving dean, dean of the Pharmacy School, has stepped down. And an interim has been appointed, and a search is underway. The provost search is being chaired by Stan Ahal, dean of the School of Data Science, and Nancy Messine, dean of the School of Public Health. And the pharmacy search is being chaired by Val Howard, dean of the Nursing School. We have not yet created the search committee to find the new dean of the Law School. I also want to congratulate Jill Hamm, who we recently announced would take over as full-time dean of the School of Education. She's been serving as interim dean for the past year and was the successful candidate in a broad national search process. A lot has been said about graduation. Appreciate everyone who worked so hard to make it successful. An enormous amount of effort goes into that event, our events team, our groundskeeping crew, our campus police, all the way to the Highway Patrol who help manage traffic coming onto and off of campus. And the fact that it went pretty close to seamlessly, from my standpoint, is a tribute to everyone's hard work and dedication. As inspiring as Mia Hamm's speech was, it wasn't the most inspiring thing I got to do that day. I was able to go to the ROTC commissioning ceremony, the Army ROTC commissioning ceremony earlier that day, and watch our Army ROTC cadets be commissioned as second lieutenants and to hear Major General Work, the commander of the 82nd Airborne, speak to the cadets. If you've never attended one of those commissioning ceremonies, you really owe it to yourself, I think, to do so.[1559.88] You won't find a more inspiring or uplifting event on our campus, and that's, that's saying something. We first graduated students here in 1798. We graduated 6,800 students just over 10 days ago. Chair Pryor and I shook, I think, about 600 hands at the hooding ceremony, and that's another really rewarding ceremony that takes place on our campus on graduation day. And, and encourage trustees and others, if you haven't attended a hooding ceremony, it, it really is highly worthwhile. These are the students who are receiving their PhDs. And to see the, the pride, not just from the students and their families, but from their advisors, you can see how invested the advisors are in their student success, and it's, it's rewarding, a tribute to, to our faculty. We've talked a little bit about spring sports as well. I'll, I'll be in Boston tomorrow watching our number-one seed undefeated women's lacrosse team compete in the national semifinal against Florida, hopefully winning a, a national championship on, on Sunday. Our baseball team is a top-four seed in the ACC tournament. Encourage folks who are, who are here in town to come out and support the Tar Heels in the ACC tournament in, in Durham. And our, our men's track team, Ethan Strand and Parker Wolf, will be defending both ACC and NCAA records in postseason competition. We're admitting 500 new students for the semester that begins this fall, as we've discussed in this, in this setting previously. So far, as of Tuesday, we have admitted 12,187 first-year students from over 78,000 applicants. We continue to work through the waitlist as well, but that's an admit rate of 36% for North Carolina residents and 9% for non-residents. We also admitted 1,525 transfer students, and we have over 200 students enrolling in our global launch program. Research funding continues to be a crucial topic for leadership here at this university and every other research university around the country. A lot of engagement with policymakers in Washington. We discussed yesterday the communications effort that we have underway to try to make sure that we're telling the great story about Carolina research, the groundbreaking, life-saving work that's being done here, and the thousands of jobs that are created and supported by research funding. And I want to make sure that we highlight the, the, the items that Vice Chancellor Knufman mentioned yesterday. The, the first new dorm being built on campus, especially to build it on the North Campus in 20 years, is a big deal. That's a significant project that will make a big difference to, to the, the, the student life experience. And our work on shared services and on space utilization is a, a reasonably fundamental restructuring of the non-academic side of our university. It's not going to be easy, and it's not going to be quick, but it's an important effort to undertake, particularly in a context, in the context of, of funding uncertainty. This has been my third semester at, at Carolina. Third semester completed, and I remain tremendously grateful for the opportunity to, to serve our magnificent university and the people of this remarkable state. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Roberts, for those remarks. And I didn't realize the first graduating class was in 1798. So, Trustee Meekins, who spoke at that one? I just, I couldn't resist picking on my friend and the senior member of our board, Trustee Ralph Meekins. I'll now get a report on the Audit, Compliance, and Risk Management Committee from Trustee Patel.
Board of trustee members, this report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on Audit, Compliance, and Risk Management yesterday, May the 21st. The committee reviewed and approved the minutes of the January 22nd, 2025 meeting. The committee reviewed and approved the 2026 Audit Risk Assessment and Internal Audit Work Plan. These items were approved by the board earlier this morning as part of the consent agenda. In addition, the committee heard from Chief Audit Officer Dean Weber regarding the university's top-five enterprise risk management topics. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Trustee Patel, and I'll now recognize Trustee Codis to give the report on the Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board trustees members, this report covers items discussed during the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure meeting yesterday, May 21st. Committee reviewed and approved the open session minutes of March 19th, 2025. Committee also considered and approved three requests for increased spending authority, one construction manager risk selection, one site approval, two dispositions by demolition, and two lease renewals. The items were approved by the board as part of the consent agenda this morning. Detailed information about each request is available on, on board. Finally, the committee heard a budget update from Vice Chancellor Knufman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Codis. That concludes our open session items. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session. Trustee White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143, 31811A1 to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to Section 143, 31811A2, A3, A5, A6, A7, and A9. And thank you, Trustee Alvarez.
So, that was a second by Trustee Alvarez. Thank you. Any discussion or debate? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. We're going in closed session now.
We're now back in open session. And I'm going to recognize trustee White for an open session report of the External Relations Committee. Trustee White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Pryor and Board of Trustees members. This report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on External Relations yesterday, May 21st. In open session yesterday, the committee reviewed and approved the open and closed session minutes of March 19th, 2025. The committee received a development update from Vice Chancellor for Development, Michael Andreessen, and Vice Chancellor for Campaigns and Strategy, Jeff Hill. The committee also received a Carolina Alumni Update from Carolina Alumni Association President Veronica Flashpolar. In closed session, we reviewed and approved several naming requests as well as the candidates for the Board of Visitors Class of 2029. On behalf of the committee, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed list of candidates for the Board of Visitors Class of 2029 in your material. Do I have a second? Any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, trustee White. I'll now recognize trustee Jones for an open session report of the University Affairs Committee. Trustee Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Pryor and Board of Trustees members. This report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on University Affairs yesterday, May 21st. In open session yesterday, the committee reviewed and approved the open and closed session minutes of the March 19th, 2025 meeting. We also heard a presentation on Carolina Athletics from Athletic Director Barbara Cunningham. In closed session, we discussed requested personnel action items, including 13 promotions conferring tenure, four new appointments conferring tenure, and one new joint appointment conferring tenure. The conferrals of tenure promotions and appointments require our vote now. On behalf of the committee, I move that the Board of Trustees vote to approve the requested final personnel action items, including 13 promotions conferring tenure, four new appointments conferring tenure, and one joint appointment conferring tenure. May I get a second?
Say.
Any discussion? Here none, seen none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much, trustee Jones. The Personnel Matters voted on an open session will be made available online after the meeting. Last note of business, I have appointed a nominating committee for election of our new officers at the next meeting. That committee is trustee Blaine, trustee Ballantyne, and trustee Bryan. Thank you for your willingness to serve on that. That concludes our business today, so without objection, we are adjourned once again before 12 o'clock.